Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting in the planning commission of the city of Campbell for September 12th, 2023. Mr. Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski. Commissioner Straskey. Commissioner Gray.
Your.
Chair Buckbinder.
Present, thank you. A way of introduction, my name is Adam Buckbinder, I am the chair of the planning commission this evening. So it's being with the minutes, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes, are there any corrections?
Um, I hope I'm not being petty, but on page two of the minutes at the end of the conclusion of the information about about the subcommittee on declaring a shelter crisis. The last paragraph says planning commissioners were in support of declaring a shelter crisis emergency, but would like to be intentional when doing this. Like to know what would be expected from the city of Campbell by declaring. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but I would like to suggest something maybe a little bit clearer.
Go ahead.
If that's okay.
Does anyone have any objections, like, yeah, go ahead.
Since Commissioner Crane, I worked on it, it's like. So I would like to suggest if can move it back to see if this agrees agreement to it. There was a, there was a consensus by planning commissioners in support of the report and its conclusions. Such that once the city completes a more detailed homeless plan in accordance with the 2023 to 2031 housing element. The city may wish to consider a declaration of shelter crisis. Declaration may help the city pave the way to bypass certain regulations that would present barriers to implementation. As well as possibly improve the opportunity for funding by state and county agencies.
Can I see just a quick straw poll? In favor of that phrasing? Anyone opposed? Yeah.
I submit that for.
Are there any other notes on the minutes? Thank you for your thoroughness. Okay, can I have a motion?
I move to pass the minutes of August 22nd.
With those.
With, with the, with the, with the change.
Second. Second, Mr. Clerk, may I please have a vote?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski. Commissioner Straskey.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Commissioner Campcar.
Aye.
Chair Susan.
Aye.
Chair Buckbinder.
Aye, thank you. Director Eastwood, do you have any communications, agenda modifications or postponements of which to notify the commission?
None of the above, Chair Buckbinder.
Okay. Open the public hearing. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item not on the agenda. They speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Say, would anyone like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? I will then pose the public hearing. So I believe that brings us to item two on the agenda, which is.
Are we doing the resolution appreciation first?
That was not listed as not on our agenda, we are doing that. Oh, it's not numbered on the agenda.
No.
Stuart, I'm not trying to shortchange.
We could make him wait to the end of it.
We could absolutely do that. So we are having or welcoming our new Commissioner Majewski. We are marking the end of Stuart Ching's, I want to say six years, seven years on the planning commission. Something like that. Stuart's been a very constant presence here. I am now going to have to remember to ask everybody. Did you put a bike rack on it? Because he's no longer going to be here to do that. So with that in mind, we have a proclamation here. Which I can read aloud. Yeah, here, one. I can, I can like stand up, so I'm looking further down on it. So. Whereas Stuart Ching has demonstrated his commitment to the city of Campbell and its residents by serving on the city's planning commission. And whereas Stuart Ching enthusiastically served as planning commissioner for the city of Campbell from March 2018 through August 2023. Serving as commission chair during 2022, assisting the city of Campbell in the furtherance of planning mission goals and policies. And whereas Stuart Ching during his tenure as chair of the planning commission effectively and efficiently led the planning commission meetings. Showing great poise, thoughtfulness, and consideration for all participants, stakeholders, and fellow commissioners. And whereas Stuart Ching has provided comments and direction to the city of Campbell on various projects impacting the development and shaping of the city. And whereas during his tenure, Stuart Ching contributed in his input and feedback to notable projects and conditional permits reviewed by the planning commission as follows. Construction of a three-story, 60-unit apartment building addition located at 601 Almerita Drive. Construction of 8,000-square-foot building for the Central Para County Library District located at 1344 Dell Avenue. Construction of a mixed-use building with residential condominium units located on East Campbell Avenue and Dillon Avenue. Plan development review permit for a project that included the construction of 25 single-family homes, five accessory dwelling units, a new private street, and landscape improvements to the surrounding area. Additionally, provided comments participated in the review of the city of Campbell's general plan update, 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Zoning Code Amendment for the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And multifamily development and design standards. Whereas Stuart Ching held a strong commitment to understanding complex planning issues, especially showing a keen sensitivity to family-friendly and environmental issues, including leading efforts to preserve trees, provide bicycle parking and facilities, and work diligently to craft effective compromises and make educated, informed decisions for the betterment of the city of Campbell. Whereas the planning commission on behalf of the residents of the city of Campbell wishes to express its profound appreciation for the dedicated service that Stuart Ching has rendered during his tenure. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Campbell Planning Commission and the city of Campbell express their sincerest thanks, gratitude, and appreciation to Stuart Ching for his service on the city of Campbell Planning Commission on behalf of the residents of Campbell, California. Duly passed and adopted this 12th day of September 2023 by acclamation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Being old, I've forgotten most of those things, so thank you for reminding me where memory goes. So firstly, I'd just like to thank the city for the opportunities to serve the commission. It was a, it was a privilege and hopefully helped, helped the city along its way or hindered, depends, depends which view you have on it. Would also like to thank the staff for their patience and support, especially when you're a new commissioner, there's a lot to learn. So I really appreciate that and really appreciate the support from my fellow commissioners. I think we've got a, a great, a great staff, we've got a great commission. We've got a great city. It's been, it's been really heart lifting to see how the city has grown. And I think being on the forefront of some of the changes which are happening across the state. So it's been great, great serving on it. Just love to wish the new commissioner all the best. It's sort of a great, great, great city with great people. So I wish you, wish you all the best. As you may know, we're going to far off lands, not, not, not too far away. So perhaps I'll take some of my lessons from that. So just like, thank you all, wish you all the best for the future. And if you, if you, I'd love to meet up for a beer somewhere. I know we can't meet more than three people at a time, so I think, so we could do all the parties. But please reach out and it'd be great to, to break to stay in contact. So, thank you.
Chair. Should we be back here or what works?
Back here, sir.
Sure. Here. Once again, thank you for your service. All right.
One second, does the podium actually project sound?
I was gonna say.
I think the audience that are in the hearing.
The. Yeah, there's one of the mics over there.
Right, but we used to be able to like hear it through the speakers.
Yeah, I could hear it through the speakers.
Wasn't this loud?
It's not as loud as it usually is. It's not, it's more like voice level.
It's voice level, yeah. I heard people going like this.
Well, the old system worked, so they fixed it.
Are these supposed to amplify?
Those are mics, yes.
Okay.
Moving on, item two, PLN 2023-72490 Division Street. It's a public hearing to consider the application by Mark Frederick for a conditional use permit to allow a large studio use, i.e. fitness training. In an existing building located 490 Division Street in the RD Research and Development Zoning District. The project planner, I believe, is Tracy Tam. And, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, good evening, Commissioners, Tracy Tam, associate planner, presenting on the project night. The project site is located at 490 Division Street, which is on the southern part of the city. And as shown on the slide there, it actually does border the town of Los Gatos to the south. The zoning district and general plan land use designation is research and development. Which is generally reserved for manufacturing and research and development type of businesses to look in that area. But the municipal code does allow for the studio fitness uses to locate it within these research and development areas on a case-by-case basis through the approval of a conditional use permit. This particular business did actually go through the conditional use permit process in 2013 and in 2019. But it was at a separate tenant space located at 1190 Dell Avenue, so it's just up the street there. At the time, the commission did approve the business to locate at that Dell Avenue address. The 2013 approval was to allow for the use to move in, and the 2019 approval allowed for additional five-year term limit. So now the business is proposing to locate at the subject site and expand the business. The applicant is proposing a large studio use, which is akin to like a fitness training. To offer services to twelve or more participants at one time. There will be a maximum of seven trainers and 20 clients at one time with business hours from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday. And then hours from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Saturday and Sundays. The main purpose of this service is to offer one-on-one training sessions and small group training sessions, no more than two or three people at a time with the trainer. So you see on the screen there the proposed floor plan. There's not going to be any kind of exterior improvements, but there will be some interior improvements. There will be some walls that are created that currently do not exist, kind of segmenting the different areas. As clients walk in, they'll be welcomed into a lobby area with changing rooms, restrooms, and then the workout areas consisting of like the cardio. Area with various cardio machines and also weight training area. So to talk a little bit about the regulations that apply to this business. As I mentioned, conditional use permits are required for these kind of fitness studio businesses. Because these, especially in these research and development areas, because the intent for these zoning districts or the research and development areas is really to allow for businesses. That do research and development, manufacturing, things like that. And so allowing these kind of fitness facilities on a case-by-case basis does offer flexibility, but also. It ensures other research and development businesses are not discouraged or precluded from actually locating in these areas. And as such, the municipal code actually does have a five-year term limit, as I mentioned earlier, which does state that these use permits expire after five years and it's an automatic expiration. Now, the applicant can submit for a new, a new use permit application prior to the one being expired. To allow the business to continue to operate in the same location, and that would be considered by the planning commission. And the municipal code also requires a 300-foot separation requirement, which the intended purpose is that is to make sure. If these businesses are moving in, they're located at least 300 feet from each other to discourage over-concentration of these fitness uses. And areas intended for another purpose. The planning commission can grant an exception to the 300-foot requirement. So for example, if there is another fitness studio use located within 100 feet of a proposed business, the planning commission does have the ability to grant an exception. However, in this case, there aren't any other studio uses within 300 feet of the subject site. Now, I had mentioned earlier that the property actually borders the town of Los Gatos. And so I just wanted to be clear that the 300-foot separation doesn't look at uses in Los Gatos. It's only contained to the city of Campbell. So there are properties across the street that do fall within that 300-feet radius, businesses in the town of Los Gatos. That's not something that the municipal code requires analysis on. The municipal code also states that these businesses, these fitness businesses shall not impact other neighboring properties as far as noise is concerned. And so the applicant did purposely choose a corner tenant space to minimize the, any kind of noise impact to adjacent businesses. And there are also noise abatement measures conditioned to the project. And the business will not be allowed to play music outside and outside the building, and they will not. They will be required to keep the roll-up door that's located on the back of the site. Closed during workouts to kind of reduce some of those noise impacts, and that's a condition as such. And lastly, due to changes in state law, notably Assembly Bill 2097, there isn't a parking requirement for this use. I think maybe this is the first project that's come before the commission. That which the city cannot impose a minimum parking requirement because the project site is located within half-mile of a major transit stop. And the major transit stop is, would be the future Hacienda stop in Campbell and the future of a Sona Junction stop in Los Gatos. Based on the staff presentation, information contained within the staff report and resolution. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow for the large studio use to locate within an existing building. And that concludes staff's brief presentation. Here for any questions you might have, the applicant is also in the audience as well.
Thank you for that presentation, are there, if there are questions for staff, let's start from the side.
Yeah, Tracy, just two quick things, one is there's a direct next-door neighbor to this building, they haven't, they've been notified about it, do they?
Correct, the city had sent a, well, the city had sent a notice to property owners within 300 feet. Of the business, of the property address, and we hadn't received any kind of calls or emails noting concerns about the project.
Okay, then one other thing, and this might be far afield, and it wasn't directly addressed in the staff report, so I think it is far afield, but just. One thought that comes to mind, any possible negative on this is that if this type of use costs the city. Any kind of tax revenue, in other words, if a fitness studio brings in less tax dollars than a R&amp;D use would, is that anything that, or is that an issue at all? It might actually be more, might be more tax.
So it's interesting that you bring that up, because I believe the commission a couple weeks ago received a presentation from our economic development division. And they had cited that fitness, well, within the last four years, you know, a lot of businesses were struggling, they weren't doing so well because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and it was noted. That actually fitness uses such as this is one of the sectors that have been expanding in the last four years. And so while the. While the city does need to look at these businesses on a case-by-case basis. Given the tenant space being about 5,000 or so square feet in an area that is still largely research and development. We didn't consider this to be an impact as far as sales tax revenue, always thought a large drop in, in, in a decrease. And I will note that this business is, while it's not a new business, and they are an existing business in Campbell, and they're just looking to expand. Currently, their tenant space at Dell Avenue, I think, is about half the size of what is being proposed here. And so they are intending to bring in more clients, offering more one-on-one personal training and kind of expanding their client base.
Okay, good, yeah, thanks, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so are they keeping their current spot and they're adding the spot?
So the current spot is set to expire next year. And there, the expiration is in, it was approved, the continuation was approved in 2019, which would put the expiration in 2024. So technically, the operator can operate until that expiration time, and they could, if they wanted to. Apply for use permit to continue at the Dell Avenue location, but I don't believe that is the intent of the applicant. I think the intent of the applicant is fully moved. I think the intent of the applicant is fully move the facility to Dell Avenue to Division Street in order to offer more services.
Also consolidate it probably. Thank you. My next question is, what is the vacancy rate in that complex? Do you have that data? As to how many spaces are open, how many are?
So what, from what I can tell based on business license data and looking at the report, our Economic Development Division completed, I think it went to Council last week, the vacancy rates are actually quite low in this area. This area is kind of called Flex Research and Development, and I believe the vacancy rate hovers between 3% to 7%, implying that it is something, you know, that is, that's attracting businesses to this area.
Okay. Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
I just saw the question on the parking. I know that it's no required parking, but there is parking there. I don't think you mentioned how much parking there is, whether or not, you know, considering the number, maximum number of folks that are going to be there, whether or not where existing parking is, is comfortable in terms of being able to manage it.
Yeah, so the project site does contain, I don't remember if I have the exact number, but it is shared amongst the businesses. There's actually a reciprocal ingress ease, ingress egress easement that's for the corner building as well. And so all those parking spaces are shared. And the corner I'm talking about is just on the corner of Dell Avenue and Division Street. And when I went by to do my site visit, and it was kind of middle of the day, so presumably during hours if people are at work, I didn't see any kind of parking issue. When I drove around the site, it looked like the site was adequately parked, and there wasn't any, there wasn't going to be an issue with, you know, not being able to find parking spaces. I will offer for this particular business, because it is a one-on-one training, people are required to make appointments. It's not like a studio where people can just drop in and, and work out at their leisure. They are required to make an appointment in advance. So there is some expectation of how many people would be coming to the site at one time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the report. No questions for staff?
No questions for me. Thank you. You mentioned the, the no, there's the no parking requirement. What is the bill entail? Can you refresh?
Yeah, so essentially, the city is prohibited from requiring minimum parking requirements for businesses and uses, like residential uses, within half-mile of a major transit stop. What's unique is that the bill cites a definition in another part of government code that also references the not Plan Bay area. Well, I guess in this case, it would be Plan Bay area, but the regional transportation plan, which then recognizes future stations that do not yet exist. And so because the future Hacienda light rail station is in Plan Bay area, in addition to the Visona Junction Station, Los Gatos, that's also in Plan Bay area. Even though they don't exist today, the way that the legislation is structured is that those two future major transit stops, VTA light rail stations being qualifying, the city is not allowed to impose any minimum parking standards. Now, I will say that is its most uses, but not all. So like hotels and other kind of bed and breakfast lodging facilities, those uses are still required to provide parking. For pretty much everything else, the state of California passed Assembly Bill 2097, January of this year, I believe, pretty much removing the city's ability to require a minimum parking spaces.
So that was the same bill for housing and businesses. Okay.
Right, correct.
And when is the estimate that those new stations will be available?
As far as I know, I don't know. I don't believe there has been a funding source identified for those, for those stations.
So I got her a little bit, but not much, Commissioner Ostraske. It's on BTA's plans, but information we got, which is about a year old, is that, yeah, as Tracy mentioned, they have no funding for near-term. It's likely 10 to 15 years before that station would be developed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Thank you. All open public hearing. The applicant likes to speak. I believe, are you the applicant?
Yes.
You have five minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name's Mark Frederick. I've had the privilege to run my business, go back as far as thirty years. It's coming up on thirty years in the next month or so. Originally, I opened my business in Los Gatos in the mid-'90s. And for twenty years, I operated there. I built a pretty large business, very successful business. Sometime along the way, I want to scale things down and provide a little more intimate service. My background, I had the privilege of being a professional Olympic athlete, and that's originally how my career started. And from that base, I've had a lot of Silicon Valley executives search out my services. And over the course of the years, I've had a lot of medical professionals reach out and assist patients. So currently, I want to scale down operations, provide a little bit more intimate setting, not large groups, certainly not the orange theories, but just a little more intimate on a private wellness side, and provide nutritional services where I oversee as new customers come and I have the opportunity to spend time with them, design the program, whatever the goal and objective may be, and from that, set the right course. So from that, the demand is pretty large. Right now, I have a waiting list of thirty people just to work with me. And the opportunity for me to bring on a new staff and provide the same services. So the big thing for me is, it's a privileged deal what I do. So I have the opportunity with the people, especially probably 20% of my clientele that come to me for the fitness, probably a good 30% are professional Olympic athletes, former idols I have on a waiting list to work with me if this operation gets approved. And a big percent of them are medical patients, people that come to me, refer from cardiologists, urologists, urologists, many different practices. But this is, for me, this is my opportunity to keep my business here, expand, to keep a lot of control and offer as many services as many as I can, to really help.
Thank you. Other questions? The applicant will start from the side.
Thank you. You've done, I think, three conditional use permit applications now. Could you describe like how has that experience been for you? And you can be as honest as you'd like.
I, I would love to. In my zone, I'm very comfortable. This setting, I'm very uncomfortable. I get a little nervous in public settings, but you know, it's just, you kind of go through the process. And it's, it's important to kind of weed out. I remember in the past, as I went through the process of identifying competitors in the area, identified a few competitors that didn't have conditional use permits. So for me, I go by the book, and I, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a process that we have to go through, keep control. Control growth is good. But at the same time, I think, making sure like my business, I do have a lot of business people in the area that come see me. Some people ride their bike, some people walk their neighbors nearby. I think where I'm currently at, 119 Dell, probably at least six people at the building, square foot, I think, system thousands will be kind of my service. So I think in that area, I would assume a lot of neighbors will probably stop by as well.
Great. That's my only question. Thank you.
Following up on the first question, how many hours of your time do you think you spent on this, going through the process?
Spending time with architects, talking to people in construction. I have a lot of people I know that are developers. I mean, Jimar, who also is a big supporter of me. He was, he reached out to a client of mine, a gentleman, founded DG, DG Card Dealerships, and he thought this space would be ideal for me. So two days later, I was throwing the space, and I walked in, and I saw the potential that it could be. It's a process. It's a long process, from start to finish. I think so far, it might be eight months.
Well, thank you for the introduction of your business and glad to hear it's so successful, contributing to the community and the whole flip.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you hire any medical staff, any maybe medical?
You know, I do not, I do not. I actually have clientele, probably twelve to thirteen physicians that are clients. One of my clients, he's head doctor for the 49ers, also head doctor for the NFL, he's a client of the facility. So there's always a sports theme, but there's always, I, I put it, if I come down with a cold, someone will treat me before that was happening. So I don't have on staff, but I do have a person that's interested coming aboard. He's a physical therapist, PhD. So I want to try to track that side.
It seems, it seems like the clientele you're handling and the type of treatment that you do, you might be able to benefit. But the, I do want to follow up on the question that two of my colleagues asked you is the CUP process, basically, because one of the things we're considering is see if we can scale back on the effort of the applicant for that process so that we don't lose somebody, you know, like you to another city.
Sure.
And so that's why, of these eight months that you've been at it, what would you attribute to this public?
I think, from my experience in the past, I think if it's a proposed use, I think it'd be really helpful for the applicant to know there's a strong likelihood because unfortunately, the reality is, for me to be at this stage, I had to sign a lease. If I add up the dollar amount of lease, it exceeds 1.5 million. So when we talk about the process, I, I think it'd be great if the applicant could propose, if there's an indicator that there would be support on the matter. Because for me, going through this, you have to sign a lease to be in a position, then I have to go through the whole process, and you just never know when you're in public.
Of course.
Sending, for sure, we granted. I never assumed, but you know, it's just, it can be a very stressful.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sorry, I just, I had a follow-up question on that. So you, you're paying rent on the space that you can't use yet?
Not yet. I have a very, very nice, flexible landlord. And because he owns my current space, they're being very patient. The big thing is for me to get approval and then hopefully be able to start construction right away. And, you know, of course, he would love to collect rent. I mean, it's a very large amount.
Just a, you mentioned that people ride by bike. Do you have a plan to provide bike parking, maybe on the diagram I noticed it?
No, the thing was, I wasn't really sure what would be appropriate, if that was allowed. I did ask a couple of questions about seating area, but the whole thing was, I never want to propose a situation where people are just congregating and hanging out there. I mean, it's just everything I have, every appointment I have is scheduled appointment. So people have a set time, they come in on that time and they leave. So they don't necessarily hang out there. But for me personally, I live in Los Gatos, and access to the trail is exactly 4.5 miles from my current location to downtown, right at University Avenue, Santa Cruz Avenue, right in that area, downtown, 4.5 miles. So a lot of my people, they're encouraged to ride the bike. They currently bring their bike inside my space. Due to the fact I have an adequate place to park the bikes, it'd be nice.
I, I would encourage you to put a bike rack out front, especially if you're not having a lot of good access to the bike. That's all I have for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can leave it on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on the side? Welcome. Please introduce yourself. Please state your name and where you're from.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Sveni Madala. I'm an entrepreneur, and then I've been a resident of Monticello for about 25 years. So I bought my property there and then built a home and haven't moved out since then. My wife is a cardiologist. She practices in San. I've been a member of a gym, popular gym in Los Gatos for 20 years, and during pandemic, I quit. And then I started doing yoga through Zoom. Then last year, my wife said, you know, you should see Mark. I said, you know, I consider myself fit, but she said, I can get even better. So I started going there. One thing I noticed is, it's one-on-one appointment. In the whole gym, it's got about thirty machines. When I go there, it's just him and me, no one else. I really like about it because for the last 20 years that I have been going to the gym, there's a section where they have weights and stuff like that, strength training. I always just think that that's not for me because I actually get interpreted by the people who lift weights. And now I think some of them get interpreted by me, although I look like however I look. So so I think it made a huge difference for me, so much so that I have a daughter who's in pursuing assistance in ophthalmology, youngest medical resident. When she comes on vacation, she comes to go work out with me. And then, and then no one else, it's just me and my daughter, me and my son. And the experience and the difference it made to me is, I think it's not measurable because when you look at all the things in life, health is the most important part. By the time you realize, most people can't really get it back. So fortunately, you know, it made a big difference. I used to think it's mostly for wealthy people, but it's not true. So I referred a mother with two daughters. One of them is in high school. She's going through, daughter's going through stress because of high school, college admissions and all that stuff, and she can't sleep. And then she came with her, her daughter, to come and work out. And I saw the difference in them. Not only the daughter got improved in school, but they have bonding between mother and daughter come and work out. So I mean, and then my wife refers lots of patients who come here. They come for a different reason. I mean, they have weight issues and blood pressure, a bunch of other things, which I don't know, but they all come and actually sing praises of her, and I can see them telling me, I don't see them, you know, in a rumor and things, as I work out, as I leave, they keep coming, so I can see them. So what I'm trying to say here is, I haven't seen a facility like this before. Ambiance is perfect. You know, I, nobody knows even I am there because I'm the only guy coming in, working out at the time I do. So, and it makes a big difference. And I see people who are very successful entrepreneurs of public companies, coming from Athletan, coming from Palo Alto, and to this place. So I think it puts Campbell in the map, and also it's a good addition to the community.
Mr. Chair, I'm coming. I just, I just want to make, I just want to let you know that I really appreciate your testimony. You know, I thought it was
Thank you.
It was, you know, very genuine. Thank you.
Would the one remaining person like to speak? Please come over to the microphone. It's so people watching online can hear you as well.
I'm Mark, so business manager. I just wanted to test the fact that operation is well-managed, it's viable. It's not gonna, you're not gonna approve an operation that's gonna go bankrupt anytime soon. He has good revenues. I make sure his expenses are well-controlled, as I can, and so I just thought I'd let you know that. And if he goes bankrupt, it's because of me, and he won't. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone on, anyone else who I somehow not see? Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close about the hearing. Discussion, start the set.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner, I think it's, I think it's a fine use. I don't, really don't see any issues with it. I did have three thoughts. Semi pertinent anyway. One is on the CUP process. Here's an example of one that we probably could have got through a little quickly, but the minor issues that we did have. But the two macro issues are, this is the first that I've heard, that the parking is on future sites, and we all know that those sites are not, not in my lifetime. So it's not an issue for this particular item, but I can see that getting happening at some point, so it's really kind of a surprise. And then the other macro issue, and again, it's not, maybe not pertinent on this particular one, but you know, we have an economic development department, and every city's, you know, just kind of looking for revenue. So I, you know, at some point, kind of trust the landlord, he's going to get the best tenant he can for this space. Obviously, they want to make the most money they can, and it works out good for everybody, but if an R&amp;D use means But if an R and D use means X, X amount more dollars for Campbell versus a, a fitness use, and we are getting a lot of fitness uses in a particular spot. And if the vacancy rate is low in that area, as we know it is, at some point, where does the city start to maybe try to encourage different type of use for that kind of sites? It's just, just my thought in general. But in terms of this item, no problem. I think it's a good use for that area and will be a good, good plus for Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I share my colleague's opinion and his vote. I also think it's a good use and I, I do have the same concerns that my colleague just mentioned. But weighing everything together, I believe this is a win for Campbell. So I will support it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with the other commissioners, you know, obviously I think if, if you overload an area that's designed for light industry with, with stuff that's not light industry that, that could potentially be a problem. But I don't see that as an issue here. I actually like the idea, you know, I, I wish, say, I, I drove by the site. Transparency sake, I drove by the site today and actually drove by his existing facility. So it's a lot nicer than the new one. Okay, it's got some trees and stuff. So, you know, I think, I think it's, it's good to have these kinds of businesses within a light industrial. Because you, you could kind of serve the office folks there in some cases where they want to, you know, whether it's Netflix down the road or the folks that are within the Dell Avenue area that they can leave work and come over, might get some clients that are convenient. So I think it's convenient for, it's, it's good for your business. I think it's convenient for those that work in the area. And, you know, most of those places are buildings that have multiple, they're small buildings with multiple tenants that are small, small businesses that, you know, we're not, we're not talking about that Netflix facility. These are all lots of small businesses within those buildings, those that, that light industrial areas. So I think, I think it's a good fit. The existing parking is there. I agree with Commissioner Frey that, you know, I don't think either one of us will be around when those stations come along. So. Really old though.
She'll be up here testifying in five years.
I'll keep it in mind, I'll keep it in mind. I do have problems. I do have a cardiologist and I do have problems. So, so I, I think it's a, I think it's a fine fit. And, and my only other recommendation is I looked on your website and you need to, you need to smile a little bit on your pictures.
Objection.
Look way too serious. Okay, so I, I'm all in favor of this.
Richard Fields.
So I will go slightly stronger and then I feel bad that we made him come here today to do this. We're doing the right thing according to our municipal code. We require this in the code, but this is his third time doing a conditional use permit. We did an exhaustive staff report. We called all of us together. It's our only agenda topic today. Like, I don't think this has been an efficient use of city time. I feel bad you had to sign a lease for one point five million dollars and not know whether the third time you've come back for another longstanding existing business that we've approved twice before as a group, would have to go through another approval. I feel bad about that. I have a solution. We'll be talking about it in our next council meeting, which is to look at certain uses and talk about which ones maybe don't require conditional use permits. Because there are some, like fitness studios, we talked about last session, come up again and again. They're popular uses. We have unanimously approved them every time they've ever come up before us. So I'm taking this moment to say, fully supportive of your business. I am sorry that you had to come and do this today. That's all, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I just, I decided to see what you're gonna have to say next week or next time we meet after, after that. But yeah, thanks for coming out.
I don't have anything to add either. And yeah, good luck with the next phase of your business. I agree with most of these comments.
Agree with my fellow commissioners, especially Commissioner Fields. I think this is like an excellent worked example of how CUPs work in practice. There's an actual concern cities have, the city has that our R and D use, which is a very specific kind of like valuable kind of land, will be filled up with this type of fitness studio. But we could express that in some objective way by saying, I don't know. Any multi tenant building can be at most fifteen percent fitness studios or something like that. I'm sure that Fields will come up with something.
Just to extend it, I think there are ways in the code and we heard one, there was the three hundred foot requirement. I think for all these, we don't necessarily have to slam all the way to permit. And Matt and I are going to talk to city staff about ways that we could look at the code where you're not completely opening up the floodgates. We don't want the entire R, R and D zone to just be fitness studios. So there's, like you said, there's probably going to be ways we could do this in the city code that do not require the overhead of the CUP will still preserve the city's ability to protect the tenant zone.
Yeah, which I, thank you for doing that work. Yeah, my understanding is that there's a sort of tendency for this use to go to industrial areas because the rent is much lower and you don't depend on pedestrian foot traffic, which is really what you're paying for if you, you know, locate yourself like on Campbell Avenue, which would be, I assume, way more expensive to get five thousand square feet there and you wouldn't really benefit from it. So I get why there's a gravitational pull of this. Anyway, I think it's a great use. Congratulations on, you know, getting to the point where you can expand. And I hope that you put a bike rack in. So I have, do I have a motion?
City of Campbell Planning Commission grant approval of a conditional use permit PLN twenty twenty-three dash seventy-two to allow a large studio use, i.e. fitness training, in an existing building located at four ninety Division Street in the RD Research and Development zoning district.
Second. Please have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bajaski.
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Aye.
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 Commissioner Caesar.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This decision is final unless appealed to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Okay, congratulations.
Right.
That brings us to item three, which is a study session slash discussion on the adoption appointment of ad hoc parking requirements subcommittee. I don't believe we have any staff write up on this, but I can provide a little bit of context, especially since not all of us were here last time. It sounds stark, you got all of us were commissioners here last time. So we appointed, as Fisher Fields alluded to, a subcommittee to work with the, let me back up a bit. The city council identified working on the economic viability of the city as a priority. And I met with the economic development consultant and suggested that conditional use permits could use some discussion. We appointed a subcommittee, which is Commissioners Davis and Camcar. They did astonishing amount of work, looked back through ten years of our permits, the last one hundred and five conditional use permits that we considered, and gave a preliminary report on, at the August twenty second date. I had, when this was, when the subcommittee was formed, I had suggested that they also look at parking modification permits because those also frequently, less so now AB twenty ninety-seven, frequently go along with conditional use permits. That was like a lot of extra paperwork, which is understandable. So they did not get to that in time. So I suggested, well, we could spin off another subcommittee to do that. And there was a bit of, well, it's a lot of subcommittee work, given that we had just done this, the shelter crisis subcommittee. I have been making considerable use of that authority, mainly because staff is somewhat overworked. And you may detect some irony in the idea that staff is too overworked to stop staff from being so overworked. So here we are. So I had suggested spinning off one more subcommittee to review parking uses. I did some preliminary work. I didn't attach my report here because it'd be kind of like saying the job is already done. But I did look through this and there's a sort of, most of the uses, even though we have one hundred and eighty-six uses, most of the parking permit, parking modification permit applications are for, you know, for main uses, which are restaurants, offices, medical offices and fitness studios. So I, would we like to have some discussion about how we would like to proceed? So I, I can make some suggestions about this. I could lecture everybody, but I'd like to hear people's opinions. Go in order or people could just volunteer opinions.
I think my only suggestion that like I found helpful as we did our subcommittee was, I know you already looked at the data and the code is enormous and there's, you know, I think for even parking, there were like dozens of different categories.
Oh, yes.
But there's a total like long tail thing going on, like you just alluded to, which is if you only met and just fixed three of them, the top three, you would knock out, like in the case of CUPs, the top four were the majority, like fifty-five percent of all of them. So knowing that we wanted to do this pretty quickly for the economic report, I, my suggestion would be to like, however you want to do a subcommittee, and I feel hypocritical because I am not volunteering for it still. But just do the top few, because hopefully what that would do is free up more time for us than to more thoughtfully consider the remainder in the next year. So that would be my suggestion. But it did seem to have a similar quality of something where people spend a lot of time presenting the case for it and then it comes before us and we just approve it every time. So maybe we should clean it up for these top uses.
Let me, let me make some comments, ask some questions here, since I was on Pushback to Gators to here today. So I, I guess one question I have is, I haven't really looked at, I haven't looked at city listings of different kind of commercial parking requirements. I guess like one question I have, Commissioner Bucklander, is, is are we trying to simplify, look at simplifying the commercial parking? Or are we trying to reduce it or a combination of both? And I guess my question to staff also is, is this on your list of things to look at in the near future? Was this a plan to review and, and, and work on? Or was this going to be something that was going to be out in a couple of years? And how does that fit into the issue of the economic development? So two different, different questions for different people.
I can go first. So my, so again, I, like, some conclusions seem to fall out of this. But like, there's no final report, we could do, the committee could, subcommittee could approach it in any direction. The thing seemed most obvious to me was to avoid trying to consolidate or rewrite uses and just change the numbers, which would be the simplest change possible.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question though to you, since you initiated this is, what is your, what was your intention in terms of looking at this?
That's fair. So when you look back, a lot of conditional use permits also come with a parking modification permit. And if we get rid of the conditional use permits, they don't need to do a discretionary process, except they still do. So because in a lot of these cases, they have to ask for both of those. Even if we got rid of the conditional use permits, they would still have to come before us. They would still have to do some, it would be a conditional use permit by another day. Like in effect, we're still not making the use ministerial. And that was my concern.
Okay, I have two questions. One is, how in this process do we make sure that there's a balanced view on the information? And then my second question is, how do we, is what you said that their parking modification permits required changes along with the conditional use permit? Does that still apply, given the new state law around the proximity to light rail? And will that take care of the issue?
So excellent questions. So first, I did check to see what, so the sketch that I made was basically, what are the rules that we've actually been using? So all these things pass, right? So the real numbers are not the numbers in code, the numbers are what we, what we approve. So what those numbers be without removing the AB twenty ninety-seven ones, which would be approved anyway. And it turns out that some, some, but not all would be, would not, would not require a parking modification permit. We would still be doing some of them, but not all. So for example, in the Dell area, there were like, I think, four fitness studios all in the Dell area, which are all near the proposed Hacienda station. So those are just not. They wouldn't require a parking modification permit, much like this one did. But there were some businesses out on Winchester that's, it's north of the radius of the Winchester station, for example. So I did look at that. I'm sorry, that was your second question, or was your first one?
How do we ensure that this process, like the information that's gathered and the decisions are made are balanced with input from stakeholders that have different needs?
That's fair. So this is all being done. The, what I did, again, this is a sketch and I am not trying to say it's not the old, but what I did was I compared this to, what are the things we actually pass? What are the recommendations that the IT makes, Institution for Transportation Engineers, or the parking standards of neighboring cities like Los Gatos, what they require? Anything that comes forward will be brought forward to the planning commission and like it will be deliberated on in a public hearing and discussed by us. And then it would become part of the economic plan, plan of the city council, where they would take our recommendations and pass it or not, again, in a public process. Like, there's no way to do this supply by day, right? We're definitely not.
And Mr. Chair, if I can add to that answer, the way we make sure there's a balance is we vote on it. You know, we each have an opinion on, on these recommendations and it's the final vote of the commission that's going to go to the staff. You know, it's not just the subcommittee's recommendation. It's what the planning and what the rest of us colleagues think about. So that's how we make sure it's the view of the commission and not just a couple.
And Commissioners just sort of asked, is this on staff's route not?
Sure, I can weigh in. So specifically reforming commercial parking standards, answer is no. I, I will add, the answer is no. So we have on our work plan many things, some I'll talk to you about. Hamilton, I have a precise plan.
Sorry, what was the question again?
The question was, is it on staff's community development department's work plan to reform commercial parking standards? So my answer was, it is not. We have several other things which I'll talk to you about. For context, we went through a major general plan update, housing own update. Two things came out of that. One is we did do major parking reform for housing. My observation, that was, that was a big lift for Campbell. Campbell had very great, high standards, but those have been reduced. And two, the, the sea change that Commissioner Ostrowski asked is SP twenty-nine seven. Effectively forty percent of the city has no parking standards at this point. So, so any of those ready, I, you see, and we had a briefing on this, Campbell can't enforce any parking standards. So if you're asking my professional opinion, I'd say in, in the last year, there's been major, major parking reform in Campbell. There still is sixty percent of the city where there hasn't been parking reform. And the area of commercial, there hasn't been parking reform. My only advice would be, you know, listening to council members when we had many, many, many discussions on parking standards. There was a sensitivity, there's a pendulum to this. If the pendulum swings too far the other way, folks are still driving, they don't have mass transit options, they will look for places to park. And if there is no parking options, they will park in residential neighborhoods. And the city has at least one case study to create a neighborhood parking district. So I, I think it's not the priority of the city, given the time investment and fiscal impact to create those. My observation would be if there's many instances where the city has akin to granted conditional use permits, adopted a parking standard for commercial use consistently that is less than what Adopted a parking standard for commercial use consistently that is less than what's in the books. That sounds like an efficiency measure, but I, I would just caution the, the commission on major regulatory reform. That context, I'd say at one point where you do have recommendations, talk to staff. If there is impact on neighborhoods, we would advise doing stakeholder engagement, which would be carried meetings. Doing stakeholder engagement, so the community is informed. If, if ordinances are changed and somehow folks are impacted by the ordinances. At some point, there'd have to be some sort of community outreach process.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion on this is I don't think we need to make any changes now, given that, you know, and that was the premise for my questions. Oh, Rob, so thanks. It's like, there's already been a big change made by the state. You're saying it's already impacting forty percent of the area of Campbell. Because forty percent is within that half mile radius, right? And it's as the crow flies, I think we talked about, right? So, yeah, it could be like a mile as you're driving. So it actually covers a lot of territory. And if you think about the locations where you have. Transportation or future transportation, which is also included. That's going to be the areas where you would be more convenient potentially in parking standards. Because it wouldn't affect residential areas. Where it would affect residential areas, you can imagine are like Santa Moss neighborhood, where it's like a very large. Area farther away from transportation, et cetera. But there's not a lot of commercial there anyway. So I don't really see an investment of time in this at this time to be like a high return on our effort. And secondly, I think it's important, you know, I think. If we're trying to make a lot of changes fast, we're trying to streamline a lot of things fast with, uh, special committees. And I think it's been a lot of great work that's been done. And then at the same time, the city's made a lot of changes. The state's made a lot of changes and I don't think that necessarily we need to do any, we need to accelerate more on top of what's been done. I feel like there's been a lot of change, like give it some time, see how things play out. I think that there is a pendulum swing and it's, you know, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying there's been a lot of change that's happening. If we add to that, we may end up with unintended consequences. I just don't quite see like what the big lead is for.
Can I, I'll comment, I, I, I agree with a lot of what, uh, Commissioner Ostrowski has just said. And, and, um, I, I don't want to see like an exercise that we're just doing an exercise that. Really that goes nowhere. Uh, this would then, uh, would require some staff time. It would require going to council. So, um, uh, so who knows where it would lead. The other thing that I would, I would talk about is I would question the forty percent number. This is commercial parking. We've been looking at those radius maps for the last year and, and I, without actually doing the homework. I would argue potentially that the half mile radius for commercial areas is a bigger, is a bigger number. That, that once you take the residential away from in terms of the residential parcelism in the city. And you look at where the radius is, are, and this is not just. Major bus stop. So when, when you, when you start looking at past, at the, at the corridors where the commercial is. I would, I would suggest to you the number is much bigger for where that half mile radius incorporates. The commercial areas where we're talking about parking.
You're saying far more than forty percent is already covered under the state law.
Exactly, for commercials.
Commercial and transportation overlap so.
So kind of rephrase just to make sure we're on the same page. So forty percent of the geographic area of the city is covered by that.
Right, but it is, but it may be more distinguishing just like.
I'm distinguishing commercial parking.
Look at commercial zoning, I'd say it's a higher percentage. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, and we are talking about looking at the commercial.
Yeah.
So it's highly possible to look and see how many of these, how many of these permits would be moved. In, in light of them being in AB twenty ninety-seven areas. And I, I did not go back and check all fifty-nine of them. Saying we could do, um, but there is still, there are still enough that. There were in each category at least, there was at least something that would require, uh, we would still be having hearings on parking. So. I, I hear what you're saying that, um, the idea, so my original idea was we should. We should change all of our commercial parking to be IT numbers, which are, uh, generally considerably lower. And. Sorry, um, the Institute for Transportation Engineering puts out something called, uh, the Parking Generation Manual. Which is where they do a bunch of studies of parking demand for various uses and they correlate, you know, uh. Thousands of square feet across area or number of employees or number of seats for a restaurant versus the number of parts shown. They then look at sort of a worst case number and then cities will then take that worst case number and they'll add a buffer to it. And then other cities will add a buffer to that and wind up with, you know, a, a lot of parking. I am, I want to emphasize, I'm not proposing just wholesale changing our parking requirements. This is, I, I'm suggesting a pretty minimal change so that we're approving the same things that we've been approving. Just without making people go through a discretionary process.
I'm just saying the impact of that, I think we're going to have, or it's going to impact far fewer people because of everything that's already been done. And I think if we end up having to review a few of them, I don't see that as being.
Sure, I can make a suggestion.
Sure.
So it seems like we either, like, like my suggestion would be to do a scoped one. And we are starting to maybe just debate the topic, which I think we're only supposed to talk about whether we would do the subcommittee. So should we just take a vote on whether we want Adam and someone to do a subcommittee and then get a report? And like, to me, it's like inoffensive if he and someone else want to do the report and then we can decide. But just in the interest of time.
Yeah, if I can, and if I can, uh, chime in, if I'm not, if I understand correctly, this is at the purview of the chairman. So he gets to decide. Does he want a subcommittee or not? Number one. Number two, he's not imposing it on anyone, he's asking who wants to be on the subcommittee. And number three, the scope and the topic is going to be what the subcommittee thinks they need to take a look at. For example, what Commissioner, um, Allen said, um. We don't know if that forty number applies, it could be higher. Well, one way to find out what it is is form subcommittee and take a look at it. Is it higher or it's not? And so, so these are all reasons for people who want to be in the subcommittee to take it out. If it, and at the end, they come up with a recommendation, if the rest of the commissioners don't like it, they, they will know. You know, and if, and if they come up with surprising results that then.
And we learned something.
Okay, I, I. Very well said. I, I agree entirely. Uh, we have not heard from Commissioner Majewski. Do you have anything you'd like to offer?
Just, just for finish.
Okay.
All right, uh, it, it sounds like, um, like two cents in it, but maybe.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you, my, my God, party, my God, what a, what a topic we get into this thing. Such a sensitive thing in the pendulum swing and I, I think Rob's comment, I think we all know that that's true. You know, so it's a question of how, what, what are we going to do with the parking committee? What are we going to focus on? Because we all know that some of our commercial requirements were definitely overparked. And we can see that and it's been part of all the stuff we've been working on. We know that that's the case. And we also know, uh, when you start to restrict it too much and it starts to affect the residential areas, that's when you're going to have political upheaval. And we all know that there's areas of Campbell that are, have major parking issues. We don't want to exacerbate those issues, obviously, right? So, I first started on the planning commission, you know, it was such a big issue then. But I do think, as Commissioner Spassner was saying, you know, the state laws and the residential changes we've made. It really, uh, taken away a lot of that for, for better or for worse, probably a little bit of both. So those issues are kind of less so now. If we do have, you know, the CUPs that are coming up and, and the requirement is X amount of parking, but we're saying, hey, you don't need nearly that much. Then yeah, then we should, then we definitely should change that. And I know there was a time. A year, a year and a half ago, seemed like a couple of designers were coming up and quite a bit. I know Commissioner Bookbinder was talking about them and, uh. And it made sense that we'd made some changes and in the interim, you know, some state laws have come out and some of the issue has kind of departed. But I guess, uh, how I would fall on it is, I, I guess I would agree with Commissioner Campar and Commissioner Davis. You know, if you want to form a, a subcommittee and if somehow they can focus, a, a subcommittee can focus on, on. Some issue that we really need to study and come to us with some issues that we can talk about. I think that would be a plus because, uh, you know, it's a poor topic.
So, um, what I'm hearing is that. We generally think this might be worth studying, but the concern is that AB twenty ninety-seven has made it so that this is kind of pointless make work. It doesn't really make a difference and that we might be, um, opening up a can of worms that, uh, we do not want to. That we will over liberalize parking and it will lead to people parking in front of, uh, residents' houses. And people will really hate that.
Well, on fairness, I mean, we don't make that decision, right? I mean, uh, this would be a recommendation for the city council. And, and, and so we're not could be liberalizing the parking, uh, if I'm, if I'm correct on that. So, uh, this is just going to be something where we might recommend a change in the, in the parking regulations. So I, I think in fairness, you know, uh, we, we're not going to be over liberalizing the park. You may, may recommendation to the city that the city may, city council might totally reject. My only other concern would be, my only other concern would be, uh, a subcommittee will take staff's time. Okay, you're trying to take away, trying to save staff's time, but I know that you're also. Working with staff somewhat, so I would be concerned about another subcommittee where you're spending some, making use of some of. Taking some of staff's time when in fact we know that they have limited resources. So, uh, if you can, if, 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 uh, uh, we could have a conditional use permit here. Of, of limiting your, the, the subcommittees, working the staff, then I would agree to it.
I think there's an easy way to do this. Um, Rob, how many hours of staff times it takes to do a modification? On average.
You're asking about how many hours of staff time to process a parking modification?
Yeah, versus if one did not come through, versus if one did, how many more hours of staff time?
I'm not sure, I guess, at least a few hours.
You'd have to research.
So if we, so if, for example, we meet with staff once or twice and it's a total of, say, two hours of staff time. It would be, it would, it's possible it would be a net positive if we got rid of one parking modification permit?
This is all theoretical. I, I guess I'll say, I'll give you my professional observation.
Sure.
Which I guess you're asking for. So there, there's a huge amount of stuff on our work plan. It's oversaturated and like professional observation is. We have one of the smallest departments, staff population and revenue ratio in the entire region. But that being said, I, I, you know, I, the ad hoc subcommittee work that it's been done to date, I've been. Pressed by, and, and generally they've been one or two meetings with the committee to ground truth and discuss them. So if you're asking my opinion, uh, one or two meetings between staff and committee members to meet and go through and talk about the right tools and approach. And how the research is going is, isn't it a huge, uh, stock? Sorry for any overuse of staff time. Sorry, that's a, it's not a huge abuse of staff time to meet with subcommittee members periodically.
Okay, I, I, so I think what I would propose is that the committee try and do as much work themselves. Have maybe one to two one-hour meetings with staff and that'd be it. Again, the, what I came up with was propose changes to take, I think, two or three numbers in our municipal code. And replace them with other numbers, which is not a complicated question.
Well, we left this last week with, with you basically suggesting possibly you could be the one person committee if couldn't get anybody else. So I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, but you know, you do have. You, you can assign subcommittee. So, you know, we're, I think the commission is, is, is Commissioner Campus. As we defer to your decision to, to, to make a subcommittee and you can be on the subcommittee. And if there's anybody else, I, I don't certainly have any opposition to other people being on the subcommittee. I did my subcommittee work. I, I'm satisfied with that.
That's fair. Given that most of the, the raw data has been gathered and there's like another layer of analysis to do to see. Like what does this look like with and without AB twenty ninety-seven? Would anybody like to, since I've already worked on this, I guess I have, maybe would anybody like to volunteer to work with me on this?
I would be interested in the sense that I have, as a civil engineer, I've worked on transportation projects and I work with IT numbers. And I have familiarity with them.
Okay.
Because of that, you know, I'd like to, uh, volunteer, you know, you'll take.
Okay, um. All right, uh. Let's see, Encantation Act recite. I would like to form a subcommittee on non-residential parking reform, consisting of myself and Commissioner Campar. With a mandate to analyze parking modification permits over the last ten years. I, I guess I'll just say analyze parking modification permits over the last ten years and make recommendations for straight line.
Yeah, can we add to that?
Go.
I think it's important to highlight what you just said, but also. Whether, what part of that information would be relevant, given the new state law that took it to, to effect?
Especially in light of AB twenty ninety-seven. I'm, I have no objections to that.
And then what areas would we specifically be impacting with the changes that would be proposed?
Like what geographical areas?
Yeah, and what, what would that impact be? So in other words, like what already falls under the state bill, what's not.
Oh, what, what geographical areas are not covered under?
Yeah, what, instead of looking at the last ten years, like look at the last ten years with the overlay of removing. What's already accounted for on state bill and then look at what the impact is going to be on the remaining geographical area. And also how much of the remaining geographical area has even come up for parking modification?
Right, so it'll be, you know, we had these, you know, sixty, um, requirements or, sorry, sixty applications. How many would we have if you take out the ones in AB twenty twenty-seven area? Yeah, that, that is, that will be part of the analysis.
So, so can I ask questions? These were, um, we recently, we recently went over an approval, approval for a dental office on Bascom. Uh, I don't know if you recall that, uh, it's, uh.
Near cabinet, yeah.
Yeah, near, near Apricot, right, went around Apricot, Bascom. And so, so there was a parking requirement for that, if I recall properly. They're saying they needed, it had to be forty-two spaces or whatever the number was.
Twenty twenty-one, uh, August tenth, um, it was, uh, the address.
That's a, that's a, that's a.
It was a general office use that was being converged to a medical office and that's why.
So does that, so the question I have then is, why the, why, why was there a parking requirement? If that falls within the half mile radius, which I assume it does.
It was before, uh.
Before the state law?
Before the law took effect. I think that took effect at the beginning of, was it the?
So, so if, if the law had already taken effect, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have been dealing with that parking thing in that particular case.
It's within a half mile of. Pass, there would be no parking. At the, the implementation date is July first of this year.
July? I thought I heard January.
The bill's effective date was that, but, uh, in some places, the actual effective date was delayed until July. We, we've had, if you've seen on some of our, um, conditional use permit applications, it says, uh, parking required zero due to AB twenty ninety-seven. Uh, but that only started this year.
Yeah, in January or June?
I just did a quick look, I think in, in July.
Okay, because I thought Tracy said January.
I could be wrong about this, um. I could be wrong about this.
So we keep to being very fast, July first, two thousand twenty-three was the effective date.
Yeah, and we've only had one parking modification permit since that date, which was on July twenty-seventh of this year. It was the eight-thousand-square-foot office building at nineteen forty Hamilton, which is in a non-AB twenty ninety-seven area, it's right on Hamilton, but it's too far east to be in radius of Hamilton Station.
Do we need to vote on anything, or is this?
No, I can just do that by fiat.
Okay.
So, yeah, the gavel is power. Okay, I believe that's, thank you for volunteering, we'll chat about that. And we'll see who from staff is available. I believe that's everything we had on the agenda. Community Development Director.
At your pleasure, I got a quick director's report I want to use, so rest your evening. So one report out, would you have an announcement on the, on the League of California Cities Planning Commission Academy for next year? And I looked at the notes with Ken and Lee, Commissioner Fields, Corey be subject to this, and I believe Commissioner Campar still has one to go to, the requirement is two, your commission. So we'll send out the dates, but it's March sixth to eighth, and two thousand twenty-four is down Long Beach. If you want to go to Long Beach, now's your chance. So we'll send out that information and expect you to.
Is it different? Like, is it different than the one I would have gone to a few months ago?
Oh, the laws change every year.
Well, of course. Is it the same conference, and then they just run new versions of it every, okay?
New information, they have new sessions, my understanding. It's generally educational, bring up speed on.
And just so I understand the requirement, it's twice ever, or is it there a certain, how many times you go in a year?
Sure, so it is in the municipal code. New commissioners are required to attend, attend to training sessions.
Thank you.
Report number one, report number two, so as you remember, Campbell has a very ambitious housing element. Critical success of that housing element is having the staff capacity to implement it. We do have a posting out, and this is more advertising, for a housing manager. So this was key, we can't, can't keep blind on point four, senior planner. So this is a important position for the city to help us meet our housing goals. I just pass on, if you know folks who are well-qualified, we're looking for qualified candidates. It's open until September twenty-second. It is a bit of a crowded field, as two days after we advertise, the cities of Gilroy, Mountain View, and Los Alamos also advertise for housing positions. We're hoping we can find some qualified candidates. One or two reports from the last city council meeting. The last city council meeting, the city council approved staff to forward to MTC A-Bag some modifications to Campbell's planned development area. So the planned development area is, it's on the maps approved by MTC A-Bag. It designates where growth should happen in the region. The implication for Campbell, it frees up funding if you're in a planned development area, if I for grants to, for funding for projects. I think you're right, I'm sorry, priority development area, too much planning going on, so. So council approved those changes, the two changes for the commissioners to know. One is, we are starting work on the Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan, and it is to designate Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan area as a priority development area. Thank you, Mr. Seligman, and do some minor cleanups to Campbell's existing priority development area, which was largely created around Campbell's pre-existing redevelopment area, which is, it's inspired. Also on the agenda, the council approved a contract with BAE Economics, and this is for them to prepare next studies to look at modifications to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance and potentially adopt commercial linkage fees. So these are critical for affordable housing production. Some of these can create new revenues for the city to use to leverage to underwrite and support affordable housing production. So we're starting to work on that. And then finally, last but not least, there was a presentation on the economic development plan, pretty much similar to what you received from Leslie Parks. One last note, I have prepared a memo to council summarizing and having attached as a report, a report of the ad hoc subcommittee on the shelter crisis. I wanted to wait till the minutes were adopted, so I'll have the amended minutes put in the memo, but I will forward that memo to the council, which pretty much has the summary of your report. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
I just, I just have a question about, this is not on the agenda or anything, hopefully it's okay for me to inquire. So, you know, every once in a while, and I'm sure the commissioners experience this, you run into people and they go, what's going on with that, that thing over there? The, like, like the East Hamilton development, near the park, okay? Why is, there's nothing, no work going on there, or what's happening, you know, at, at the technology center, right? So, so as far as I know, I know there's this GIS thing on the website where you go in, and it's a very complicated map that has like lots of little icons that tells you applications and developments, right? But it's real basic. But I don't believe there's anything else on the website where you can go and it goes, here's a list of major developments that are going on in the city in layman's terms. Like, that site, and it's Campbell, which has been, nothing seems to be moving. And what's the status of that, what's the next step? Because I, I believe residents, the city, and stakeholders would like to know that kind of thing. I certainly, so I, I don't want to give you any more work, but it would seem to me to be a good thing if the city put up on their website a status of major projects that are in the process, and, and where they're going. Because I think that's not only useful information for us, but it's also useful information for residents. So it's just, you know, an input. And, and the reason I bring that up is, I was walking, I was walking back and forth to the Prune Yard on a walk one day, and I, I saw the empty lot every time I walked by. But the other thing was, I was walking, I was walking by the Prune Yard at the Union, and there's a big sign there now about a new building, okay? And it's got a big picture of a fancy new building on the, where Prune Yard says they were going to put a big office building at, at, at the south west side of Prune Yard, right at the Union Avenue and Portals, right? And it's got this big five- or six-story thing that says hotel, retail, and offices are coming. Now, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but I remember us talking to Prune Yard about them changing their plans and putting in a building with residential, unless I'm mistaken about that, that they were going to, instead of putting in more office space, they were going to do high-rise residential. And it looks really nice, but it's different than that, but I was expecting so. I, I was just curious about, if you know anything about that.
Well, I guess I'll say that, so looking at our train, so they aren't, these aren't items, I think you're jumping extensive discussion, probably, I can't say why you're discussing my item. But to answer in general, so, so number one, our staff is available to provide answers. We get questions from council members like yours. We're free to ask those questions and we provide answers. In a brown act city where you deliberate, we wouldn't want to do that, but just factual information. Two, the city does have available, I'm willing to push out to other commissioners, that resource we do have of GIS, it does show, someone's applied for a planning permit or a building permit, at least you know what's going on in your neighborhood. You know, some cities have tools, Campbell does not, where when you apply for a permit, you actually have to put a sign up and let neighbors know, you know, this is what's being applied for, but something the city could consider in the future. It's a tool that has been used here, response to your questions. If commissioners do have questions on factual information on what's happening, always happy to provide, just defer from deliberating in this meeting.
You don't want to say anything about the Prune Yard thing?
I'd say generally, the Prune Yard might, you know, factually stating has approvals, I think, for an office building. They've also gone through a housing element where they've designated a housing site, so you might see them hedging their bets on what to look for.
And that's very, two questions, quick questions. One, when is the city council hearing sixty-eight-page street again?
It was deferred from the last meeting to the next meeting, the two meetings from now, October third.
October third, okay, and can we have the AB twenty ninety-seven layer on the city's GIS map? It's not on there. Thank you, those are my questions. All right, I think we're all set. Okay, we'll adjourn to the next meeting of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Everyone have a lovely evening.